You're alive.
Good evening. It is Monday, April 18th, 2022. This is the Carney Board of Aldermen meeting. Call the meeting order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shirley, have you had a chance to take roll?
I have taken roll. Everybody is present. You have a call.
We'll move on to the next item on the agenda this evening. Accept the certified election results.
Mr. Mayor, we just received the election results today from the election board certified, and this is how the count goes. For Alderman Ward One, Jerry Spencer, 612 votes. And that is, that is the total. No, no one ran against you. And then Carney Award Two, Alderman, David Lehman, 512 votes, 255 votes for Marie Steiner. And so David Lehman is the winner of that race. And I have prepared an oath of office. If you guys would like to stand and raise your hands, and I'll read you the oath of office in place. Do you, Alderman Lehman and Alderman Spencer solemnly swear that you possess all the qualifications of the office of the City of Carney Board of Aldermen as prescribed by law, that you will support the Constitution of the United States and of the State of Missouri, the provisions of all laws of this state affecting cities of this class and the ordinances of the City of Carney, Missouri, and faithfully demean yourself in office?
I will.
I will.
Congratulations. And if you'll sign this for us, we'll keep that on record.
Congratulations to Alderman Spencer and Alderman Lehman. Look forward to continuing to work with you both. Our next item is, as provided by Missouri statute, the board shall elect one of their own members as board president. So Jim, if you could start that process for us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As, as provided by Missouri statute, the board shall elect one of their own members who shall be styled acting president of the Board of Aldermen and who shall serve for a term of one year. Alderman Holt is the current board president. The floor should be open for nominations. After nominations are completed, the mayor should call for a vote on the candidate.
Make a motion to retain board president? Second. Well.
Are there, are there any other nominations? If there are no other nominations, I'll close the floor for nominations. So, look, we have a motion on the floor to nominate Dan Holt. Can we entertain, anybody entertain a second motion?
I second it.
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Vote is unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
The next item, please.
As provided by Missouri statute and city ordinance, a member of the council selected by the council may serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and Alderman Barger is currently the P N Z representative. Again, the mayor opens the floor for nominations. After nominations are completed, the mayor should call for a vote on the candidate. No motions are necessary. As the mayor, what you say is, Mr. Mayor, I nominate so-and-so. And so it doesn't require a second. I should have put all that stuff in the first one. It's just a simple vote. No motions is necessary.
Will I nominate Kathy Barger to stay on Plan Z?
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, those in favor for Kathy Barger?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote is unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is the Chamber of Commerce bylaws provides for the City of Carney liaison representative to serve on their Board of, Board of Directors. And Mayor Pogue recommends approval of his reappointment of Jerry Spencer. And that would require a motion and a second unless somebody wants to nominate themselves.
Make a motion to approve Jerry Spencer?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you for your support, Board, in allowing Jerry to continue to serve in that position.
Final item, Mr. Mayor, is by ordinance, the mayor has the appointment authority for all park board members. City ordinance provides for a liaison from the Board of Aldermen to serve on the park board, and Alderman Pogue recommends the board approve his reappointment of Dan Holt.
Second.
All in favor? Oppose?
You got that, Shirley?
Got it.
Vote was unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda this evening. Are there any questions or items of discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, can we entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Consent agenda passes. Thank you. We'll move on to Mayor's remarks. I have no remarks this evening. We'll move on to the administrator's report.
Mr. Mayor, I'm pleased to report that we had good bids on our roofs. The combined total of the three roofs is $221,000. My budget had recommended that we finance that as a lease purchase finance. I would suggest that we take another look at it and see if we might include it in the ARPA funds since we've been tapping those recently. I think this would be a good item for that. I would ask that the board accept the low bid as recommended by Christian Oathout. Not on your agenda is his recommendation letter. We'd opened him up just on Thursday. And we did look at the option of letting the contracts individually. We'd have about a $5, $5,500 savings on that, but we'd have three contracts to wrestle with and three different contractors. We've interviewed each of those, and his memo explains that. And we do believe that J R and company has submitted a quality bid and can get this work done very soon, in May, we're hoping. So I would ask that the board authorize it to proceed, and let me proceed with the recommendation at the next, at the next meeting on financing. Financing for this kind of project could be arranged quickly, but I'm hoping you guys will sign off on an ARPA fund appropriation.
Is Oathout?
Any?
Oathout is our consultant we paid to help. Actually, if we hadn't, we wouldn't have had these bidders because they all, all the bidders that we provided did not, only, only one came through. And so if we hadn't used him, I don't think we'd had any bids. So I'm very appreciative of the fact that we went through this.
Are there any other questions from the board on staff's request? If not, can we entertain a motion to accept the low bid? And we'll look for staff to provide a recommendation for funding at our next meeting.
I make a motion to approve J R and company for completion of base bid one, two, and three in the amount of $221,000.
That should be 221.
221. Motion is made.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, make a.
Go ahead.
Make a motion that we find bidding, is that what you want? That we're finding funding?
Yeah, yes. And I think that was in Jerry's motion.
Okay.
Jerry's motion is complete, I think, on that. So I'm going to be returning.
I didn't know if they were two separate things.
Right.
Okay.
And I do want to assure Jerry that, that Christian Oathout says that we will be done with the museum once this roof is put on. So I'm going to be looking for a sheet rock man really quick.
We're going to hold you to that, too.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Before our zip trip. We don't want ladders in our roof. That's enough.
Oh, I ain't got the truth.
Boy, now the pressure's on. Mr. Mayor, under public requests and petitions, we have enclosed a site plan for a commercial building that is 12,600 square feet, proposed by Star Development at 405 Sandbar Drive. At their April 11th meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended four to zero to recommend approval of the project, and those minutes are enclosed in the agenda packet. After a report from David Pavlich and board liaison Kathy Barger, approval would be recommended from staff. David?
I was waiting for the direction from the mayor.
All right. David Pavlich, you have the floor.
Ron Cowger and Robert De La Fuente, representing Star Development, are in the audience on via Zoom. So they are here today if there are any questions for the developer or the engineer. The proposed project's appropriate in Innovation Business Park. And the trustees, the innovation trustees, did approve the project, and Planning and Zoning recommended unanimously approval of the project with conditions.
Are there any additional comments from our Planning and Zoning liaison?
There was very, very little discussion on this. It's pretty standard for the thing. So we didn't have, we didn't have much discussion.
Thank you. Board, do you have any questions from applicants or their representatives?
Are these all spec? Spec spaces or are these rented already or?
Yes. Mr. Mayor and Board, Ron Cowger, A G C Engineers, 405 South Leonard Liberty, Missouri, here on behalf of Star. Yes, at this point, they are speculative buildings, or speculative spaces.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions from the board, can we entertain a motion to approve the Star Development commercial building, commercial site plan?
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Congratulations, Mr. De La Fuente and Mr. Cowger. We appreciate your continued work in Carney. This is going to be a great addition for our business park.
Absolutely. On behalf of Star, we look forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to the next item.
Mr. Mayor, enclosed is a memo from Fire Chief Kevin Pratt requesting ARPA funding in the amount of $138,525.14 for overtime expenses and other expenses incurred during the COVID-19 pandemic. Chief Pratt and possibly Board President Todd Gustafson anticipate attending this meeting via Zoom. I can't read anymore, David, that far out. Are they on there?
Are who?
Kevin Pratt.
Kevin Pratt is online, yes.
Okay. And their meeting runs concurrently with our meeting, so I didn't know if they could join us. But a resolution has been prepared rounding this amount up to $140,000 for the board consideration and approval. Enclosed in 5B, there is a resolution.
Yeah, I. Any questions from the board on this request? I know Jim and I met with, with Chief Pratt several times through the pandemic and, and early on, once it was confirmed that the City of Carney was going to be receiving ARPA funds. As the board knows, I did reach out to both the school district and our fire district to see if we could continue our good relationships and, and the city do our part in sharing those resources. So I think that the districts did a phenomenal job in continuing top-notch, top-quality service through the pandemic, and I think they provided us a reasonable request for us to consider. If there are no questions or on this from the board, can you read their resolution, please?
Resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement with the Carney Fire and Rescue Protection District relative to $140,000 ARPA funding recognized as being the, within the standard allowance as permitted by the final rule of the U.S. Treasury relative to coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds pursuant to Resolution 4, 2022.
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Resolution passes.
And, Mr. Mayor, we have with us Harry Patel, representing our local motel owners. Remember, Prague was here last, at our last meeting. I was waiting for the financial statements. They walked them in this evening and have shared them with the board members, and your copy is here, Mr. Mayor. But I would like to invite Harry, if he'd like to come up and speak just briefly, and explain the request. If you don't mind, Harry.
Sure.
Come to the microphone so you can be amplified. Yeah, yes, come, come closer so he can hear. That'd be good.
Okay, my name is Harry Patel. I'm a hotel owner for the Carney, two other hotels, Shore Stand, Holiday and Express. I have two other members here. They own the Coral Lodge, and the Quality and Parrot was not be able to make it today. So I'm here to represent the hotel. Due to this pandemic, everybody knows that we are the hardest-hit industry. Due to that pandemic on the 2020, we have lost quite a bit of business. Due to that, we barely made it through, but we have a lot of bills has been piled up, which we have to recover. 2021 was a little better, so we'll be able to recover some of those, but we still have some pending bills. So I'm here to see if we can get some sort of help from the city, from the, you know, rescue money, what they receive from the federal. At the same time, we request help from the state and the county, but we didn't have any luck to get anything from this county or the state. Platte County did help their hoteliers down there. Overland Park, city does help their local hoteliers. Other state has done it. Nebraska State done it. Iowa State done it. Washington, D.C., Prince William County has done it. So I'm here to see if we can get some sort of help from the city, from that money. If you guys have any question, I'm more than welcome to answer.
Thank you.
How much money you're, you're looking for?
We requested, I mean, I'd love to have more. Whatever help we can get. We, we made a fair proposal to the mayor and Jim when we did a meeting. $1,000 room count. But mayor has put, you know, talked about it, mayor and Jim has talked about it, that $500 a room. You know, whatever, I mean, we're here to see whatever help we can get from the city. At the same time, I have give them idea to create more revenue for the city also. That, you know, there are a lot of city, in Kansas City, they charge arena fees, you know, $1.50, $2.00 per night, per guest room rented. So I give them idea, whatever help we get, I mean, we can put something, you know, in our hotel also that, hey, $1 parking recreation fee that can go towards, you know, improvement the parks or whatever you guys want to make the approval, and that can be stayed at permanent. At the same time, you know, Jim and has talked about it, you know, increasing a little bit of self-tax, which I did not recommend them because we're getting some business here just because of lower the tax. Because you drive 10 minutes down the road in Liberty, there is plenty of choice in the hotel, plenty of restaurant down there. But at the same time, that's, that's self-tax rate down there is a 15%. Down here, we're almost, you know, a little bit less than half. Plus, down there in Liberty, they pay $1.50 arena fee. Also because that fall in Kansas City, city limit. So that's something we can do in our part to generate some of the revenue for the city for permanent. You know, that can, because at Five Hotel, if we look at it, let's see, you know, average hotel does about 5, 7,000 units a year. That's $7,000 per hotel. So being a five hotel in town, if we do rent 40,000 rooms per year, that's $40,000 revenue goes to the city. That can be used, you know, wherever you guys want to use towards fire department, wherever, you know? That's something, you know, can be, can be thinking about it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And, Mr. Patel, I appreciate you and the other owners of the hotel industry that we have here in Carney. Being there this evening and providing us actual financial information to review. Is it 250 total rooms we have in Carney, an estimate? Do you know, Harry?
Yeah, it's about 45. Yeah, it's about 220 rooms, 220, 230 rooms, right around.
Get that number right for us. Get that number right for us, okay?
Well, right here. How many rooms you got?
41.
41, 40. That's 81. I got 80 rooms at the Holiday and 45 at the Shore Stand. Prague has 31 at the company.
So what, 237?
247.
47.
247.
247.
247.
And all the financial, you guys see that total revenue, that's, that's the total bottom line. You know, that's the total revenue. We have a mortgage, insurance, property tax, the, you know, those are all plus self-tax. Those are total revenue, you know? So we like to see whatever help we can get from the city. You know, it would be appreciated.
And thank you, Mr. Patel. Well, over the next two weeks, the, the board and myself will review those, that submittal, and if you would like to appear for a final time at our next regular scheduled meeting, we'd be happy to be prepared to make a decision at that time.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, under old business, or excuse me, under new business, we have a proposed ordinance. All right, Mr. Mayor. I didn't, I guess I have it on the agenda as old business, and it is old business.
It is, it is kind of old business. We thought we've, yeah.
We've prepared an ordinance that essentially does what we did with Resolution 4-2022, with declaring the revenue from ARPA as being lost revenue using the standard allowance. They have had some seminars since we already appropriated the chamber money and the Legends Festival and the water piping. And they have really encouraged folks to, to, especially those that are under $10 million like we are, to, to declare all of the appropriations. And they said we can re-categorize those first three resolutions, and that's what this ordinance will do. It's, it's, it's going to re-categorize those appropriated funds to be designated as lost revenue, electing the standard allowance created by the Treasury Department. And, and it also sweeps back and re-designates or re-categorizes all the ARPA funds. So if you'd permit me, I'll read that title of that ordinance. It will, it will save us, they claim some, some deeper audits that they, they would have to go through otherwise. So I think we should take their recommendation.
Yeah, first reading by title, please.
An ordinance declaring all ARPA funds received and to be received by the city as lost revenue using the standard allowance as permitted by the U.S. Treasury and reclassifying resolutions 23-2021, 29-2021, and 35-2021 relative to the appropriation of ARPA funds and declaring city appropriations as lost revenue and to elect these funds be recognized as being within the standard allowance as permitted by the final rule of the U.S. Treasury relative to the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. And this is an ordinance, so that, two readings are necessary.
Well, I make a motion to approve on first reading.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title, please.
An ordinance declaring all ARPA funds received and to be received by the city as lost revenue using the standard allowance as permitted by the U.S. Treasury and reclassifying resolutions 23, 2021, 29, 2021, and 35, 2021 relative to the appropriation of ARPA funds and declaring city appropriations as lost revenue and to elect these funds be recognized as being within the standard allowance as permitted by the final rule of the U.S. Treasury relative to the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds.
So moved. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Hold the board, please.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barger?
Aye.
Vote is unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
Great. We have no new business scheduled this evening. We do have an executive session notice. In accordance with R S M O 610021, the board may go into a closed session during this meeting to discuss matters of litigation, legal actions, and/or communication from the city attorney as provided under Section 610021, Subsection 1, and/or real estate under Subsection 2, and employee or personal matters under Subsection 3. We consider motion to enter into executive session.
We're moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call vote?
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barger?
Aye.
Vote is unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we will enter executive session at 6:57. And after executive session is completed, we will return back to this platform to finish the public portion of our meeting.
Okay.
We're unmuted now.
All right.
The mayor's back already. Wow, he's faster than we can walk. You can get to meetings faster than we can get here.
We adjourned executive session at 7:57 with no formal actions taken. With that, we'll move on to Alverman discussion. Alverman Spencer?
I would just like to say that attended a meeting today and I have a list of the oldest continually owned businesses in our county. And the newspaper has been around since 1846, but it has changed hands many times. Second oldest business is Carney Trust Company. It is still a locally owned. It has been around since 1882. So I am giving kudos and a shout out to Carney Trust Company and how lucky we are to have that continuity in our community.
Thank you for sharing that. Alverman Holt?
I'd just like to thank everybody that came out to the polls and honored and privileged to be able to serve with you guys for another two years.
Alverman Barker.
I have nothing this evening, Mayor.
All right. A great meeting this evening. Can we entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. We are adjourned. Everybody have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Safe flight.
Thanks.